So I started to think, okay.
Do you want to?
Well.
Do you want to?
Well.
Do you think they're?
I see it.
Email them different.
You know what?
You know what to do.
Yes, that's him.
Because they would. I mean, he. So that's.
Awesome. And they want to do.
Yeah, she. You can.
What were you?
So. So. Yeah. No, 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 well, yeah, well, he got some patients from that. That's where I found there and I think they look. This is her shrink.
Say.
These are like. Start somewhere. Um, still.
Hello, Councilmember. How are you? There you go.
But there are some of these. I don't know. There's a. You have an impression of people in their shorts on. It was a shame to the last occasion.
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you all for coming. It's five o'clock. Um, to our special city council meeting. Let the record show that our hotel call is absent. As we get ready to go now, citizens in comments to discuss our budget review. We will be talking about only the item that is on the agenda. This evening, the D S twenty-three, that zero, five, six. Mister Leo Lukas. Good evening, sir. You have four minutes.
Can I make a response?
Right.
All right, um, real quick, um. What I like, my point here is when we, as you're doing the budget, when you're presenting and looking at the overall of the budget. I know one of the first things that's going to come up is the veterans exemption. On how much we're going to lose from the veteran exemption portion. All I'm asking is to be fair across the board and put out all of the information. Not only what we're going to lose from the veterans' benefits. Plus what we get back from the state for that, but also get these other organizations, the churches, the nonprofits. The governments, the city government, the K I S D. Put it all out there to show everybody what we're losing. Because the last time I've been here, it seems like it's just the veterans. That seems to be getting hit when we do the budget region, talk about the budget. I just think we should be fair and across the board and put it out there for everybody to see. What each of these entities are taking away from the city when it comes to tax purposes. K I S D, the city, the county. You know, property that we're looking at possibly, the city's looking at possibly buying. That's the seventy-five-year project up on top of the hill. How much taxes are we going to do from that? All I'm asking is to be fair, impartial, and put it all out on the board, on the table. So everybody can see where we're losing instead of just going with the veterans exemption. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Michael Corinno. You have four minutes, please.
Hi, Michael. Uh, secondly, what Mister Kazan had to say is, let's not forget that this is a largely veteran community. For a lot of us that actually did go downrange. Earn that exemption by sacrificing our bodies to sort of disability ratings. That's a large part of, you know, some give back, give back earned. Uh, but the larger point, but the general point, uh, when it comes to budget items. I would encourage the council moving forward for a lot of aid being made the last couple of days with the animal clinic purchase. Where a building that was valued at about half a million dollars sold for three times that. And it's my understanding that none, if, but if I'm an error, please, please correct me. But none of you actually went down there and kicked the tires, you know, you know what the inside of the building looks like. As far as the animal clinic, that purchase. Moving forward, could we, for accountability, if there's ever a purchase like that in this coming fiscal year and consecutives fiscal year. If there's any, if there's any, uh. If there's any large purchases like that or any outliers or budget out there that's repaired a garbage truck or something like that. At least have some of you down and take a look at what we're spending the money on and ask the hard questions. Why do we have to, for garbage trucks especially, why do we have to keep doing things piece real? Why can't we just come up with funds, you know, fix it outright, if not purchase new equipment? Just, all I'm asking for is a little bit more accountability, uh, a little bit more common sense when it comes to the spending of our money. I'm just trying to be as polite about that as possible. This is just proposed budget. Again, seeing all of the line items. Building on that, I mean, I just got a sticking point going back to that animal clinic. And that's roughly a million and a half dollars is spent on a piece of property that was overvalued, in my opinion, in many others. But I'm only speaking for myself here. How much of that money could have gone to raises for the city or anything else if there are dire need of? Was that an absolute need? If we have, if there's a way that we could triage what we're spending on, discover some sort of a maker, maybe. This is absolute priority. Okay, I know Mr. Boyd is all over road repair and things like that. Where, where things fit in the grand scheme? What do we need? What do we want? What would we like? Just go from there. I would just ask for a little bit better judgment when it comes to the spending. And that's all I can ask.
Shirley, the council?
Yes.
Good evening, ma'am.
Good evening. You want to go out there, right?
Yes, ma'am. You have four minutes.
And then, ma'am, do you hope you're giving the?
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Sorry. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, are you?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, yes, um, I like these other speakers and the sound about our debt that we have already. And continues to grow, uh, as evidenced by last week. I'm just asking that you all take a good look at each thing that comes before you. Ask the ground, throw it back and forth to each other before you vote. That's what I would like to see. Uh, I'm sure you all have your own budgets in your own home. So I'm asking, please don't come to city council and just, just vote. Because it's not the right thing to do. Stay within our budget, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Item for discussion at workshop, the D S twenty-three, that zero, five, six, this for the year twenty twenty-four budget review. List the date. And let the record show that all council members are present.
Mayor, council, um, so if you'll remember back, it was in January, we, we set, we set this meeting to get a preliminary look at the budget. So, um, just so you know, we just finished sort of going through all the department, departmental budgets and reviewing them. And, um, so these are preliminary numbers, but they're, they're good numbers, uh, yes, ma'am.
Did you e- email the, to the council?
I think it ju, I think, no, it just.
Maybe you have received just five deck and a email, actually. You haven't?
Yes, pleasure to talk to you.
Yes, ma'am. Okay, I'll bet.
Yeah, this.
You will.
Finest part was here through the weekend working, getting, getting the, uh, the, the numbers correct. So just to give a, a little forecast of where we're going this summer and into the fall. Is that the final budget, the city manager's final budget will be delivered to the council July eleventh. And, uh, sometimes in the past, we've had a special council workshop, if you want one, it would, the, the best time would be July eighteenth. Then a budget public hearing, July twenty-fifth. And you set the proposed tax rate, the highest tax rate, you can always go under. Uh, August first, if there is going to be a geo bond election, the call deadline is August twenty-first. And then if any changes are made after the first pub, public hearing, we'd have another public hearing September fifth. And then how do things work out between now and then? We need to adopt a budget on September twelfth and ratify the, and set the tax rate. So this is not the whole budget, but it's the major, it's the major funds. And we'll start with the largest one, which is the general fund. And we'll go over some of the, the major revenue increases. Obviously, these are all forecasts. We don't have a final, um, uh, tax roll yet. Obviously, we don't know exactly what the sales, uh, tax revenues are going to be. But we're proposing about a thirty-six million dollar budget in sales tax, which is an increase of about two million. Property tax increase of about six point one million. And this would be with a one cent decrease in the rate. And, and as always, this, uh, rating includes new construction as well as value increases. And, um, we'll talk a bit more about the disabled veterans exemption, but I believe that, well, as we all know, the session's over. And any hope for additional reimbursement from that session is over. But, um, there is a remote possibility in the special sessions that are coming up. I, I don't know. Um, at this point, it's too early, but, uh, you, you never say never if there, yes, ma'am.
Can you elaborate on that when you say remote?
Well, the, the governor's going to set the agenda. The only things that would be on the special session, what the governor wants on. And, um, I know he will be asked, uh, I believe our representatives will ask, but, uh. I don't know how upon the agenda.
Okay.
That, that this is.
Okay, thank you.
So here are all the exemptions since we have talked about this. And we'll talk more about the veterans exemption in a moment. And I'll tell you the reason we talk about this is because the state granted this exemption. This is not bashing veterans. The state granted an exemption and it falls disproportionately on a few cities across the state. Every city in the state has churches, has schools, has city buildings. Those, those are more or less equal across the state. It is very, very disproportionate. Um, this fifty-three percent of all exemptions, you don't, you don't see that except in a very few cities. And that's the point. If the state's going to offer an exemption, they should pay for it. And if you go back to when this was first offered, the state, the fiscal impact for the entire state, the city of Colleen will probably exceed that next year. For the entire state. And so along those lines, when you look at these columns, if you look at the increase, this, the, you, you see the years on the left. Total D V, the second, two hundred and seventy million increase, a two hundred and seventy million increase in exempt property in the veterans exemption. Up to one point seven billion. Okay. When you look at all the new construction in the city of Colleen, it was two hundred and twenty-four million. So this is the fifth year in a row, the exemptions, the property taken off the tax roll has been greater than added to it. Five years in a row. So, and then if you go back to two thousand and eighteen, it's, uh, it, it, it is a little bit larger. You got to go back to two thousand and seventeen before the new taxable, the new construction was greater than the D V exemption. Now, the only positive thing I can offer about this right now is the rate of increase has dropped off a little bit from, from last year, from the twenty-four point six. So the question is, how much more does this increase in the future? Clearly, it's probably going to be double digit. But hopefully, it won't be in the twenty-five or thirty percent range that we've had in some years. If you go, I, I can tell you other cities in the state, I've talked to city managers, they don't even know what this is. It doesn't even exist in their budget. This is why we talk about it. I want to emphasize that we talk about it because the state voted in a benefit, but told people in Colleen, Co., Parker Heights, Nolanville. You're going to pay the lion's share. They didn't tell anybody that. They didn't know it. They weren't hiding anything. They had no idea what they were recruiting. And I think, I'll include myself in that, I voted for it. I had no idea it had this impact. And I will assure you, almost the ninety-plus percent people that voted for this didn't, didn't know the impact of it.
Just real quick, if I'm not a mayor and city manager. An email just came in, uh, from the scooter group at five twelve, two minutes ago in the states. The speaker has just ruled that the two tax rebuilds that the senate just passed are outside the boundaries of the governor's call. Because they include homestead exemptions and therefore.
It does, right here.
Yes, ma'am.
And we can't say they try, they get by for it. And thank you, Mister Kayden, also.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Boy.
Um, so let's look at major expense increases now. These are, um, well, I'll start with the appraisal district, fifty-six thousand dollars. Their costs go up as well and they pass them on to all the entities. Now, this is a new one. You're going to hear a lot more about this, but we've been paying nothing out of the general fund for many years now, uh, for, uh, mass transit. It's a Hill Country Mass, Hill Country Transit District, or the HOP as we know it. And this is the amount we have in the budget right now, so it's from zero to six hundred thousand. This is still a, a work in progress. Uh, at one point, they were going to be asking for one point two million. Uh, they'll be making a, a presentation to the council coming up very soon, I'm told. Now, that number has lessened. I don't know what it is. But my guess is it's going to be somewhere between six hundred thousand and one point two million. And what we have in the budget right now is, is six hundred thousand, up from zero. Now, remember, we had put some ARCA money towards that, but, but no general fund dollars. Another thing, if you remember, we had been funding a number or some general fund operations out of the solid waste fee. That's not right. But it was such a big number, we're slowly transitioning it out. Um, so this is phase three, moving mowing out of solid waste to the general fund where it should be. Um, and that's three hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars.
Mister Kayden?
Yes, ma'am.
Why did we put it in phases?
Well, because it, it was such a shock to, to the system to take it all out at once. And we, we did talk about it, though. So if you go back in time, you're, you're going to see a, a theme through here that, that we have been working on many years. Is the way the budgets were balanced in the past, well, we're not going to touch the tax rate, stick it in the water sewer funds, stick it in the solid waste fund, put it somewhere else, whether it fits or not. And we've been on a finance, a multi-year, uh, campaign to get this all straightened up and to get the expenses where they were, where they should be, excuse me. So there'll be one more year of this.
Counsel, if you have any questions, if you don't mind, I guess do it slide by slide so we can.
Yes, sir.
Work then, uh, Councilmember Sagal.
Just a question on the hop. Uh, I know that when we, uh, threw some ARCA money at it, I knew that it's going to come back as one that we did that, we expected the routes. But prior to that, because I, I know we used to, within our budget, we would always give money.
Yep.
It wasn't six hundred thousand. I remember when they tried to increase it, we kicked it back and we lowered it to what we used to, I can't remember what it was.
It was around two hundred.
Two hundred thousand. But, uh, the question is, uh, the last couple of years, have we given them anything besides the ARCA money?
No, when COVID hit and they got, uh, a, a lot of ARCA money, they stopped asking the cities for money. You can, that probably was not a good idea.
Yeah.
Um, but to defend them a bit, you've got to go back in time. They were operating a system that was very profitable with Medicaid transports, non-emergency, uh, medical transports. And the state took that away. It took away a significant portion of revenue from them. And they should have taken some action at that point to, to let everybody know, we've got, we've got a problem here. Instead, they used up fund balance, they made it go as long as they could. Until that day, they had to come to the cities and say, hey, we need a big increase. Um, and then COVID came along and they got some federal money. Now we're back there. And they were providing, you know, they cut routes. And we added back a route with ARCA money. And so it's going to be interesting to see what the cost for all of that is now. But they're most likely going to be, uh, talking about a completely different method of mass transit. I, I don't know a lot about it, but, but, um, somewhere between what we're doing now and Uber. Uh, some more on-demand things, so, uh, that's going to be up to them to present to you. It'll, it'll be interesting. And I just don't know, the only thing I know is what we have in the line item right now.
Well, and I knew that, that would come back as, of course, we, we gave them that ARCA money and they added the route.
Yes.
But to maintain that, I knew it was going to take some money. But the point that I was trying to get is that, you know, I think it's been, let's just say, three years that we haven't given them anything. That would kind of even out if it's six hundred thousand, because we've been saving about two hundred thousand the last two or three years not giving them anything. And I don't, I know we probably haven't accumulated that, but, I mean, that's probably where, if, if we can get away with six hundred thousand and continue our current route, I think that's a plus. But I think that's going to guard, and that's probably why they're coming back with more money. But, I mean, six hundred thousand, it's not a, you know, compared to what we used to give two hundred thousand a year and then three years not giving them anything. All they're asking was what we've given them in the past, so it's not a, a big jump. I don't see it as a big jump.
Right. And we're, we're not for sure at this point what they're asking.
Yeah.
But if we go forward with piggybacking, um, on Councilmember Sagal, we know that the council make a decision to add more routes. It's going to be more than six hundred dollars, correct? Six hundred thousand?
Yes, ma'am.
And that's just, yes, sir. And that is, uh, uh, the quality of life or revenue. If someone say we want to add two more routes, but I think this massive transit that they will present, I had the opportunity to, uh, uh, hear the, um, hear from them. And they talked in detail about it. I think this would be a game changer, uh, moving forward for central Texas if the council decides to move in this direction. The council member Sagal, if you may, sir.
Yes, thank you, ma'am.
Councilmember Abbott.
The mowing that's referred in the major expense increases, is that parks and city buildings?
It's, uh, right away, the, the, the city buildings and parks is different budget. This was, this was all the other, not drainage.
Not drainage.
There's some drainage mowing in the drainage.
That still comes out of that enterprise?
Yeah, because that's appropriate there, sure.
Okay, that's my question was, thank you.
Anyone else? Mister Kayden?
And, and so we have our IT department is in a, a separate fund and its costs are spread out over the city. The different funds depending on how much demand they create, how many PCs they have, things like that. And the same thing has been going on there. So, uh, we're trying to make the general fund pay what it should be instead of overcharging water and sewer and, uh, solid waste primarily. Um, our costs for general liability and property insurance have gone up, hundred and ten thousand. And this last one is sort of a, a good news. Code enforcement is spending a lot more money on abatement, cleaning up properties, tearing down buildings that need to be torn down that the property owner won't, putting leans on the property. Uh, but, um, they're doing a lot of good work there. And it's, it's hard to tell them, we've got all these properties that need to be cleaned up, but which can't do it. So those are, these are costs that are in the, the budget right now. And, and what we have right now is the, it's a balanced budget with the one penny decrease in the, in the general fund. And I will show you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
On the code enforcement. Because there, this was a council directive to clean up our city. And I know because money was left to kids, but are we going to hire more, uh, personnel to assist with, uh, really putting a bigger dent into the cleaning of our city?
Well, we'll, we'll get there in just a moment.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Yes, ma'am, I heard you.
Thank you.
Now, a- as far as additional people or, uh, packages in the budget, there was just really three. We need a new records manager and police department. This was desperately needed. We're bringing on a new system. But we're going to have much more information available to the department, to the officers, to the public. But we have to, we have to make sure the system operates appropriately. And that is one person. The other one that I, I recommend approval is increasing paramedic pay for those that are riding the box that, that they say. We have an incredibly busy EMS department and they get worn out. And I'll tell you, it's created some controversy. For a long time, it was all the, the new people rode the box and we were losing people because they were going elsewhere. Some, well, many times for more money, but for a lot less work. And now we're spreading it out, uh, among everybody. It doesn't matter your tenure, we're trying to use everybody equally. But this helps recognize that some of the work they're doing when they are riding, riding the box. And then we have under budgeted overtime, uh, in, in the fire department pretty significantly. And this is an attempt, it doesn't get us all the way there, but it's an attempt to get closer to the actual budget that, that is spent. We get reimbursed for some of it when, when they're on, uh, a, assignment throughout the state or to, perhaps somewhere else in the country. We get reimbursed for that. But this is also, this is just, we are fairly understaffed, uh, in the fire department. And they're out a lot and we have minimum staffing that we have to maintain. The past couple of years, we've done a lot of things to tighten up the budget so to make sure we don't have huge surpluses at the end of the year. But this is one where we have gone too far in that direction, far too far under budgeting in overtime. And I will tell you, we're working hard to do everything we can to keep it down. But there's certain minimum staffing we have to have on each apparatus.
Are we, are we still understaffed in that department, the fire department, or?
Well, it depends on who you ask and, and, and how you, uh, what your standards are. There are some that would say we're severely understaffed because we had to have four on every engine step three. So we're, we're, we don't have the financial ability to get there. If, if you're going to go that far, you can say, yes, we're severely understaffed. When we add the new station and the new personnel, that's going to help a fair amount. But we're still going to be tight on all the engines when we run just three personnel to reach.
Well, and, and the reason is because you mentioned that we underestimated our overtime.
Yep.
So we have a lot of overtime. Is that because we're understaffed or is it just because they're making more runs than?
Yeah, yes, sir. I, I, runs don't really, uh, have anything to do with it. It, it's understaffed is part of it, but, but keeping all of our positions filled is, is probably the bigger part of it, I have to say.
Sure.
Yes, sir. And so I'll tell you how we're going to try, how we're trying to address that in, in just, uh, a moment, right here under compensation. So if you'll remember, we used ARCA money to get a pretty good, uh, pay increase two years ago. What we said, we know ARCA money's going away and we're going to transition those expenditures back into the general fund. So when the ARCA money's gone, it's all, the, the general fund has picked it all up. And we've been doing that every year. And that cost us, uh, five hundred and forty-one thousand dollars in the general fund this year, absorbing fifty percent, fifty cents of that increase. And there's the last, the remaining fifty cents in ARCA funding is in the general fund. And next year, we'll have to absorb that. But on top of that, for civil service, this is police and fire uniformed services, we're talking about a seven percent cost of living adjustment. Now, in civil service, remember, there are steps. So as you move from one year to the next, you already get pay increases on, not all the steps, but most of them. And so when we give a COLA, that causes the steps to go up and that's an increase too. So, um, those are the costs for civil service. There's about a million in the, in the ARCA money, three point one million in the seven percent COLA, four hundred and twenty-five thousand in step increases. And then all the other employees that, they don't have steps, but it's a six percent COLA for one point four million. That's in this budget right now. And so you add, look, there are thousands and thousands of expenses in the budget, up and down, from zero to a, a number, from a number to zero. There's almost an infinite number of changes in the budget. But when you look at the big stuff, big increases, it's about an eight point six million dollar increase. And if I go back, remember. And if I go back, remember, the, the major revenue increases were seven million. We're, we're absorbing a lot, uh, in inflationary costs. And then ARCA money has skewed this a bit because when it's used, we put it in the general fund where, where it goes, but we also know it's going away, and, and so the ARCA spending is going down, so that, that impacts this too. But just know, our expenses are greater, the increases are greater than the revenue increases. So that means we've had to cut other, other areas in the budget, because we do have, this is a balanced budget where it sits right now. Now, what's not in the budget, this is always almost a, a discussion point that deserves as much or not more than what we've been over already. So what we ask the departments to do is to try to put a budget together that doesn't have any new personnel, that we do the best we can within the resources to provide the same level of service. And then after that, you put in packages, uh, asking for additional resources. Usually, it involves personnel, but sometimes it's not. Sometimes it's a capital package. So, in the general fund, there's sixty-seven positions that were requested that we don't have funding for. And, um, another three point nine million requests of packages without personnel. And I just want you to know, all these requests, uh, I've, I've been through all of them, and, and none of them are just, this is something we want, it's nice to have. These are trying to keep up with the service demands. And the reason, and I'll, I'll show you this, the, the reason behind this, when I go back, I talk about this BB exemption so much, it's, it's because, as I said, it's disproportionate, the state should be funding it. We're just asking them to reimburse them for a law they passed. But we lose about ten million dollars a year. And just because you have a veteran's exemption doesn't mean you don't call nine-one-one, you don't drive on the streets, you don't use all of these services. When you get to there, we could almost fund everything if they reimbursed us. Well, we do about three-quarters of it, because right now, uh, in this budget, there's two million in reimbursement from the state of Texas. Two point six. We're one of the few lucky cities, uh, that gets some reimbursement, but that reimbursement went down. And it's gonna continue to go down if nothing has changed, because more cities have become eligible for it, and more cities have found out about it. If, if you, uh, if you're a city or a county and you touch a military base, and you have more than two percent, it, uh, it's a certain percent of your budget is impacted. You get some level of reimbursement, and more cities have become ineligible for that reimbursement, so our part goes down. So, these amounts are not in the budget. We are, once again, one more time, we're, we've applied for the SAFRA grant to fund for three years the, uh, the additional personnel to staff the new station. And we should know something, I believe it's end of August, yeah, end of August we should know, yes, sir.
What's, what's the timeline on that, that we need that, because I know right now we don't even have that yet. So is that gonna be something that we really need to focus it on this budget or next budget? Or do we need to kinda break a little bit, you know, start spreading it over, over three or four budget cycles until that, uh, station is ready? Because we don't wanna do it all at once, so.
Right, the, the station will be complete towards the end of next year. You wanna hire the people before that, so they're, they're trained and ready to go when, when the station's open, that's the ideal. Um, and we have, to a certain extent, we have been doing that, but, um, this is a tough discussion to have. We can't, we're, everybody that applies for these, it's not in the budget. Otherwise, you can't apply for it. So, we have ways in coming years, uh, to deal with this if we have to, um, and I'll, I'll get to that in a moment.
My point was that it's something that we need to focus on this budget.
And we have.
We're gonna be ready by next year, so it has to be.
And we have.
Even though you say it's not budgeted.
And it's not.
It's gonna have to be budgeted, one way or another.
Yes, sir. But if you budget it, you're eligible for the SAFRA.
Oh, got it, you got it. Oh, I see, I see.
So it's a catch, it's a catch twenty-two.
I have a question. How many, uh, employees make up the, uh, personnel for the fire station floor through the SAFRA?
That's twenty-four.
Twenty-four total. Wow, okay.
It's twenty-one firefighters and three captains.
Got it.
And, and so remember, when you, that the station's open twenty-four seven, so it, to, to staff one position every hour of every day of the year, takes pretty close to five people. Because the one person's not working twenty-four hours a day, every day. And, uh, there's training, there's vacation, there's sick time, and all that adds up to, you know, somewhere between a little over four and a half people to get one year round. And, and there, we don't know, we, we put in an estimate on the hot, we'll know more in the coming weeks about what the proposal is, but that's a possibility as well.
Mr. Kegel.
Yes, ma'am.
On the unfunded decision behind just the forty-three, in general, uh, what depart, at least the other, um, just various departments throughout the city that we've spoken about before?
Throughout the ci, throughout the city and the general fund, so it's, it's, uh, police, you, you see the fire separated. It, it's police, parks, streets, ports, all the general fund departments. Now, we can always go back, if, if you think of a question for the general fund as we go through some of these, it's easy, it's easy to go back. All of the funds we're presenting to you right now, they're all, they're balanced, but there's different ways they're balanced. Like the general fund was, we looked at all of your priorities, and honestly, just the first couple pretty much took all the money, the, the compensation. We've been down that road before, where we add employees and don't give a pay increase, and you end up with a lot of vacant positions, and that, and that's not helping. And with inflation, um, is this pay increase we're talking about, uh, oops, I'm sorry, I need to go backwards. Here, is it greater than the market? If it is, it's, it's only gonna be a little bit. There'll, there'll be cities, some cities giving less than this. But what we've been trying to do is improve our position in the market, so we don't have so many vacancies. There will be some greater, and that's not far off of inflation. And remember, you hear a lot of talk in the media right now about inflation easy. That just means the rate of increase of stuff slowed down a little bit. It's still getting more expensive. It's incredibly more expensive than things were two years ago. In the water and sewer fund, so the total revenue increase in the water and sewer fund's three point one million now. This is, this is significant. The only way we've done this is, um, a year ago, we did a rate study, and there was five years of proposed commercial rate increases. This is year two, and that generates about three hundred and twenty thousand. But what this adds is a, is a proposed residential increase of a dollar fifty a month that generates about one point one million. Same thing on the sewer side, or about the same amount. Now, where does that go? We get a lot of rate, we get a lot of increases passed on to us. I am not knocking WCID. They have a huge capital plant. They use lots of chemicals, lots of energy things that have gone up a lot. But these are the rate increases that are being passed on to us, and the, the cost increases that we don't have a say in. Right there is one point two million. The six percent COLA that's for all the employees other than police and fire costs three hundred and ninety-three thousand. Continuing to try to get our line replacement of water and sewer lines where it needs to be at seven hundred and twenty-three thousand for a two point three million, uh, total there. Then there were two packages here, a water maintenance crew. You see how many line breaks we have, how many times we have to, uh, give boil water notice to a small area where there's a break. It's gonna be a while, even spending more money on line replacement before we're caught up. And we've got these guys working all hours of the night and day, these folks, excuse me. And, uh, so there hasn't been a, a, a water maintenance crew added. Now, this one I'm confused, I can't remember the last time we added, but it's been many years. The same thing i- in customer service, in the utility department over here. I wanna show you, so I'm gonna jump ahead. Look how accounts have grown, a- almost fifty-five thousand accounts in twenty-three. During all of this time, we've never added anybody in utility building, wow. Yes, ma'am. And they're about at the breaking point over there. They, they seriously need help. And they do a great job, um, but, um, it's, it's, it's beyond time. So that would be a total of seven positions that are added in the utility budget for, uh, these major expenses, three point eight million. Now, remember, what's going on underground with water and to a lesser extent sewer lines is the same thing that we saw on the streets. If, if you don't invest in replacing, you, you see, you start to see what happens.
Mr. Kegel, I thought you were on a plan that we was gonna increase it every year.
Yes, ma'am, that is, that number at the, with the underline, seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, there it is.
Thank you.
These are the rate increases, uh, that we have absorbed. Now, I think, uh, are the percentages, you see it goes nine and eight?
Right, those are the percent.
That we got that year, I'm sorry, that we got that year, yes. And these are, these are just, uh, okay, you see the water and sewer, thank you. Most part of these, we, we mostly absorbed. These are costs we have no choice. And once again, I'm not throwing any rocks at WCID, it's just, they have a cost to do in business as well. And it's passed on to all the customers. So this is the way the rate increase would look. I don't know if, uh, I, I can't see the, on the screen. But under current amount, that's the current rate, so the current residential rate this shows sewer is nineteen twenty-six. The recommended is twenty seventy-six. And we're not recommending any change in the volumetric charge. Same thing on the water. The bottom three lines show the volumetric charge, those would stay the same. And these are the residential, uh, increases. You see a dollar fifty across. The larger meters are, are multifamily meters.
So the city will absorb the increase?
Well, then, a- a- actually, it's the customers that get, what, are you talking about the WCID increases? Well, yeah, we, we pay it no matter what, and, uh, what we've done in the past is reduce maintenance of lines rather than passing on costs.
Right, and that's something the council have to consider?
Yes, ma'am.
If we wanna stay up to date, but also we have to pay a fee that is still from our own, so, okay.
Uh, and this is the commercial rate increases that, uh, year two of the commercial rate increases. And this is on sewer?
It's a dollar fifty.
Yep. And then, uh, okay, we just went, I'm sorry, we just went through water. And then the commercial. And then this was the slide I, I forwarded to, was the, the growth in accounts. Now, also, a- as you get new accounts, um, we get more money. But it's also very weather dependent. We, we can have a year where we add a lot more accounts and still sell less water if you have a very wet year. What's not in the water and sewer budget are five personnel that were requested for, for that total. The, the solid waste fund, the, the major revenue increase is eight hundred and twenty thousand. But when this says residential increase, that just means we grow, that's not rate, there's no residential rate increase proposed. There is on the commercial side, third year of an eight percent increase. A little bit more revenue in drop-off fees for transfer station, that's primarily for non-residents. Because we've expanded what residents can take for no cost to the transfer station. And, and now that we're moving, th- this is a little hard to explain. For the first two years, we left, uh, mowing in, uh, in solid waste, and we just transferred in money. Now that the majority is in the general fund, we're making a payment to them for the last one, and then this will all be settled after the twenty-five budget. You won't see that.
Would you say that again, Mr. Kegel?
So let's say, three years ago, the cost for right-of-way mowing was a hundred percent in, uh, solid waste. And we said, okay, we're gonna move it out in, over four years. So the first two times, we, uh, we just transferred in money from the general fund into solid waste. But now for the third time, it's a majority of it's out. We, we've moved it out over to the general fund, and we're saying, okay, to cover that last year, general fund is gonna pay.
Solid waste is gonna make one payment to the general fund.
Yes.
And then the final transition will ha- happen next year. So the first year.
Thank you.
The first year, general fund transferred two hundred and fifty thousand to solid waste. The second year, they transferred a half a million. And now for FY twenty-four, we picked up mowing and moved it out of solid waste and put it in the general fund. And now solid waste will pay the general fund.
Thank you.
For, uh, a quarter of that payment, and then FY twenty-five will be the final transition.
Of two fifty.
Of two fifty, and then stuck, and so forth. Thank you.
And it, and it will stay in solid waste or the general fund?
General fund.
It'll stay in general fund where it should have been. Thank you for that.
Sorry, I was looking.
That's okay. I think it's important that everyone knows, understands why we do.
So here's some more increases we've had in this fund that we have no control over. We'll, we always bid it out, but, um, the, the cost at the landfill to dispose and the transport, the transport the waste from the transfer station to the landfill, that's almost a million dollar increase in one budget.
Did we, did we add more services or something?
No, cost, no, so. Now, there's two, there's two things there. The, the rate, the dump it went up, the rate to transport it went up, and we're taking more because we got more people. So the volume went up as well. Now, we, we heard someone mention this earlier. Yeah, we'd love to solve this problem of maintenance on fleet, but we're two years behind. We're, we're waiting, we've been waiting for two years on, uh, solid waste vehicles that we've ordered, that we have the money to pay for, that we can't get. And it's an industry-wide problem. And so we have no choice. When the time comes, we've gotta go pick up the solid, we've gotta go pick up the garbage. And if a transmission goes out on a piece of equipment that should have already been replaced, we replace the transmission. We do what we have to to get that vehicle back on the roads for picking up garbage. And so that has been very costly. What we've done in this budget, we actually moved one up to make a bigger order knowing it's gonna take so long to get them. We've had, uh, not quite as long, but, but the same thing in the police department. We've got two years' worth of, of vehicles that, that we've ordered and have the money to pay for, we haven't received yet.
So, Mr. Kegel, we have vehicles on order for fleet service. One of our vehicles, a truck, broke down.
Yep.
We have to repair it, and we know we have it coming, but right now we need that vehicle to be operational. Where, where's the money coming back to enter that account? Does it come, I know it's come from general fund, but what?
No, not this. This is solid, this is solid waste fund, so.
Right, but once we, solid waste is paying for an item that they didn't see coming because they use, the fund's still gotta be set aside for those vehicles that they, that are coming. So when they get to the point where they're really being pleaded for something, the budget, their budget, so how are we gonna reimburse?
We don't do some things that we planned on doing, move money. You, you do anything you can. You do anything you can, you do what you have to do to get that, that truck back down on the road.
And that's the police department doing?
Sure. And it's frustrating when we, we know we planned ahead to replace these vehicles. And if we could have gotten them and if they were reasonable time, that truck that needed a new transmission or whatever would have been out of our fleet and gone. You know, we would have auctioned it off and sold it and we would have a new one there.
Do we have, we don't have vehicle shortage on solid waste as far as like garbage pickup or anything like that?
Oh, I would say we're very thin. And we have enough to do the work, but it doesn't take much of a breakdown to get us a truck.
Well, the reason I say that is because I, I've noticed it myself. And I know some people, you know, like my, for example, my area, the garbage around ten in the clock in the morning used to be picked up. Now it's after five o'clock. And it's like, oh, Monday, and the garbage is still there. And I'm thinking, it hasn't been picked up, but sure enough, it's after five and they're still working. And I'm thinking, you know, maybe there is some kind of shortage of vehicles or manpower or something like that.
It's not as much manpower as it is vehicles. So sometimes when it's a late pickup, it's because a truck went down. And we had to wait till another one was finished with the route to go finish it. The other thing, some of the routes start getting longer as you add more homes. Now, we're adding more money here to do that. But those are the two primary reasons.
That's probably that breakdown. Because it's happened quite a bit. I thought they had just changed it completely to after five.
No, that's not, that's not intention. Yes, ma'am.
I want to finish my question. So you were saying that the money have come from somewhere else within the budget. How do you, how do you plan? That's why I'm asking, do they come out of general fund?
No.
Or are you pulling it from other departments? And if so, I'm not sure, just asking the question. How do you plan that budget or that director planning? That's what I'm trying to see, the unexpected. How do we flow with that within the budget?
Well, it all has to come out of the solid waste fund.
And they cut off on a project they may have been working on. Oh, wow.
Or, you know, we budget for a hundred percent of employees to be there all year. We know we're not always a hundred percent, so there's some savings there. That's the first place you're looking. And then it's, did we save money somewhere else? Did we do something where we saved money or we're gonna not do something we planned on? If things happen early in the year, you can do that. When it happens late in the year, it's tough.
Right. In general, I know this is kind of happening all over the United States, so it's not isolated to just me. However, I mean, we're talking about the delay of vehicles. Is this something where, it sounds like it's an elementary question, I'm sure, but we're looking at Ford versus Kia. Like, is there an option to switch to something that's available? Or do we have any options along those lines to expedite?
Not really. There's not, there's not a whole lot. And once you've got something ordered and you're in queue, you don't wanna cancel, you don't wanna cancel that order and then try to get another manufacturer, then you're at the end of the line.
Sure.
And it's an industry-wide, across all vendors, problem.
And so, when we're looking at police vehicles and we're talking about two-year delays with technology, how does that affect us in the long run with regards to that?
Well, we're, we feel pretty good with our interceptors now, the Ford Explorers. They perform very well. And we had to go away a number of years ago from the Crown Bix, but we still have some in our fleet, right? We're finally out of the Crown Big business. Out of, just this year, we got out of this Crown Big business. And we still have some Pahos. And, but, but fleet really believes that the Ford Explorers have performed a lot better than the Tahos. So, most of the technology is, is on our side. It's on the computer radios, things like that, not the vehicle that gets delivered to us. All the add-ons comes pretty close to doubling the cost of the police vehicles. There's the same cost of living adjustment here. So there's about a million six in major increases there. There was a request for eight. We'll, we'll get you all the details on these. You'll see all the packages. We'll give them to you. This is an early, high-level look at the budget. Eight positions requested, not funded in this budget. And this shows the rate increase on the commercial.
Can I ask a question on?
Yes.
That last one? When you have your F T Bs, that request is in addition to what they're slotted for right now, right?
Yes, sir. That, all the things that we talked about that are in, that are in the budget, and this is things that are not in the budget, eight F T, eight positions requested.
And so, with that said, how many of the currents that we have budgeted? How many, do we have any vacancies?
Oh, sure.
So we still have some, so that's a big issue. So we wanna make sure those get filled too.
Thus, the, oh wait, I went the wrong way. The, the six percent COLA. This is a larger COLA than we've had in ages. But honestly, is it really much different because inflation is so much higher than it's been the past decade or so? You know, when we were given zero or two or three, well, I can't compare it to zero. But if you're giving two or three percent COLA in a non-inflationary environment, we may have made more ground there. The employees may have made more ground than they are now with the six percent.
So that's more, more retainability of what we got.
Yes.
I know sometimes, you know, we walk more, but I think the challenge sometimes, I know with our police department, we had that conversation. It's like, we have so many slots open. And people say, we need more police officers. Well, we need to fill the roles that we have. That's what our challenge is. So it makes no sense to add. We can't even find people to fill the slots that we have slaughtered already.
That's it. These are the commercial rate increases. You can see at the top, the residential, that hasn't changed. And just, I think the next, oh. The clean residents, the drop off, there's no change, but they still get, I forget the amount now. It's a hundred pounds a month at least free. I think it's more than that now. But we are increasing the cost to non-residents. We've been giving the service away. We increased it significantly in the current budget. And we continue to see an increase from non-residents. So I think the idea is to continue to increase this until we hit the right spot for non-residents. It's not a whole lot of additional revenue. Now, this is something I want to show you. The bars, you go back to two thousand fifteen to sixteen was the last time we increased the rates in residential. And it looks like it was sixteen seventy or something like that. It went up to the current nineteen something. And it stayed the same, two thousand sixteen through the proposed twenty-four budget. But our two biggest costs are disposal and transportation from the transfer station to the landfill. And so, our rate is on the left side. On the right is the cost for per ton for transporting and disposing the solid waste. And you can see that it's gone up especially since twenty-one. And part of the reason we're able to afford this is because we're moving expenses out of the solid waste fund that should have never been there. And when there was a lot of talk about money that could be saved in contracting this out, it was because, it looked bad because we had so many costs in there that were not related to solid waste. A private company coming in, not gonna pay for our right away mowing. We're getting closer and closer to apples-to-apples comparison between what the city provided service versus what a contractor would provide.
Yes, sir. Mr. Kegel, so the city, we provide a lot of free services to our residents. If we cut some of those services that we provide free with that help, we'll not have to raise up the rates. Because it, it confused me. We provide something free, but then the slide says that we haven't raised rates since when? Two thousand fourteen to what? Sixteen to what are we providing free services when we know that we need to increase our rate to make sure that we provide the right services?
Well, the biggest, the biggest service we've been providing was basically picking up anything put to the curb. And we're working hard and have a charge for that rather than just pick it up. When we were overwhelmed, we were just doing everything we could to get everything off the curb. And we weren't able to charge for it. Couple more funds. These are a lot less dollars, but there's some changes here and we want to make you aware of. So we're looking at about eight hundred and forty thousand increase in hotel occupancy tax. Most of this is attributable to short-term rental revenue. So that becomes effective October first. Here's a six percent COLA here. Now, one thing that the law requires us to do that we have not been doing was doing more advertising and marketing of the city and of our hotels and of the convention center. We have not been doing the amount the law requires. And so, we're trying to get right and the two hundred and seventy thousand will do that. And that shows a subtotal of about three hundred and fifteen thousand.
Mr. Kegel, can I ask you a question on that? Is there a hotel marketing and hotel?
Yep, to help with heads and tails.
What, sorry, you said hotel city and what else?
Oh, our convention center.
Okay, thank you.
Question. What kind of returns can we expect on contributing to these tours and all these advertising dollars?
Well, that's, you would hope you see an increase in hotel occupancy. I mean, there's a, it's easy to measure. We can look at the revenue because the rate's the same. There's no change in rates. So we'll be able to see if there's any impact. But on the other side, we're required to do this.
Sure. Is that made up of more or less billboards, website ads?
Magazine.
Stuff like that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, there it is.
Would, would any of that count? Because I know we do that, but a part of our hotel motel that we give to the Modern Warfare Foundation, I know we give them eighty thousand, but it's geared specifically for advertising where they put the logos. So I don't know if that's something that can count towards that or not?
I, it's possible. That's a good, it is possible and we will.
Yeah, because that's exactly what they do, do with it.
Yeah, I mean, they're marketing the museum, but they're marketing clean as well.
Yeah, marketing, they got billboards.
But that's also just a logo.
Is that in-house advertising or re-contracting out for marketing and advertising?
It's mostly, it's mostly us taking out ads in tourism magazines, trade magazines, things like that. Sorry. All right. Now, as you know, the convention center is over twenty years old now. There's a lot, we've, we've been doing some catch-up. But they wanna do more events. That's where you see the hundred thousand offset that what we've been doing in the past is just waiting to see what comes to us and rent the convention center. We're gonna lead some more events, put some events on and offset those expenses with revenue from the events. But the ballroom and bathroom doors, replace the bathrooms on the inside, wipe them out and replace them. The flooring, that carpeting in many places is really bad. We don't wanna replace it with carpet. It's something carpet-like. We don't wanna go back to tile, but something carpet-like that can handle the type of traffic. What we have in there was never really meant to handle the amount of traffic that it gets. So, all of this is included. Obviously, we can't change the rate with no rate increase. It's, it comes primarily from the change to the short-term rentals and increases in hotel occupancy as we get better occupancy rates coming out of COVID.
Mr. Kegel?
Yes.
As it relates to this, is this gonna require additional personnel or technology for tracking the metrics for these advertisements? Which we're getting in turn on our investment?
No, because the bottom line is hotel occupancy revenue. That's pretty easy to track, the revenue that we get.
So I'm sorry, so which avenue is, or which one works?
Which one works best?
Yes, sir.
Yes, we will.
It's not a required additional personnel. Let me get.
No, ma'am.
But would you say that they have met what they needed to, the requirements? I mean, they've overdone it. When you look at some of the hotels, only time we had the lower mouse would be during those COVID months.
Yes.
And that's when we stopped. When I look at those numbers and the percentage, is that's, that's the only time.
On advertising?
Yeah, and meeting the need and meeting their need in that H of the hot tax.
Yep.
As we have spent it through our boards and assuring.
And that funding's still in there.
Yes.
The arts funding's still in there. So the only change in street maintenance, as you know, there's two functions in street maintenance. We're paying for yearly as-you-go maintenance, anything, the cracked ceiling to slurry seal to mill and overlay, all those things. And the other remainder, we're setting aside for remove and replace the big road contracts. We're talking about moving three hundred thousand on the annual street maintenance side and away from the, putting it aside for replacement. It's not a huge change, but we get a lot of man for the buck out of this money. The only reason I'm bringing in golf is because it has been part of the general fund. Most places, it's its own enterprise fund. And just to show you how it's performed over time, if you go back to two thousand and sixteen, you can look at the revenues and expenses and how we were losing money until the two thousand nineteen, twenty budget, where you see the little under twenty twenty F Y. Seven months into the year, we contracted that out. And then, and that was in two thousand nineteen. It says F Y twenty, that's fiscal year twenty. We, you can see the performance that started happening. And, and they got better in the middle of COVID and two, pretty much two historic freezes that really damaged the course. And we actually turned the profit first one in twenty-two. Then, in this year, it looks like we're gonna do much better. No rate increase proposed in twenty-four, so you can see costs will continue to go up with the same rates, make a little bit less.
I think you can go back further, twenty sixteen shows up. And the loss continues.
Oh, I think so. Yes, sir.
But is proposed in twenty twenty-four that we would decrease in revenue coming in?
Net revenue. Because we're not talking about a rate increase in twenty-four. At least at this point, we're not. And expenses go up. Now, you hope you do, you hope we outperform that.
I hope.
You can do that if you get more rounds at the same, at the same rate.
Remember, we had that big, I'm sorry.
No, you're good.
Remember, we had that major debate about the golf course. You know, that we were the best, that we had the best screen and we had all these things that was gonna increase the eyesight and value. I don't see it here.
I do.
Where do you see it?
Well, look at two thousand seventeen, losing four hundred and seven thousand dollars to our estimate twenty-three of net revenue of almost a hundred thousand dollars.
So do you think that all the, the money that we put into the golf course, that it's bringing the revenues like we expected to?
I think, I think so. It's covering, it's covering its expenses.
It's covering expenses, okay.
These are, these are operating costs. Now, what you're asking is a question that I'm about to bring up on the next slide about capital. Ideally, what you want is going out in the future where you generate enough revenue to make a debt service payment to do some large capital improvements. We have bunkers out there that are in horrific shape. A lot of people wouldn't play this course because that's, that's not sand in the bunker there to the left. That's hard dirt. It's not even playable. So, we have some capital money budgeted to do some bunker and tee renovation. But there's a lot that's not included. And I'll show you a few pictures here. We've had a retaining wall fail on number eighteen. I'll show you a picture of that in a minute. We've got irrigation out there that's over twenty years old. We're fortunate enough to get a lot of the controllers replaced last year due, out of insurance due to the lightning hit. But, but the actual pipes, sprinkler heads, all of that is in excess of twenty years old. The driving range renovation is something that's a nice to do. It will generate some money, but that's, that's nothing we're talking about right now. It will generate some money, but that's, that's nothing we're talking about right now. I just want to show you how things could be. Same thing with renovations to the clubhouse. That's for the future, not, not something right now. What's more important, our tee renovation, bunker renovation, retaining wall replacement, irrigation renovation. This is hole eighteen. This is what happens when you don't engineer retaining walls appropriately. It should be tied back in to the, to the soil, far back under the fairway that you see there. And clearly, it wasn't. So, I don't know how far this is going, this is fairly recent, how far this is going to have to go. But we've got this retaining wall failing on the eighteenth hole. This is what our driving range could look like if you're going to be something more like top golf and generate significant revenue. We have a great training facility out there. A lot of golf courses don't have the land that we have for driving range, chipping, chipping out of the sand. We can use both ends of the driving range. It's a very nice amenity. Once again, this is not something we're talking about in this budget, but letting you know what could be.
I think the clubhouse would be a really good benefit. If you look at the whole wedding specifics in the states, well, I watch the hotel tax only because I would watch the art condition, see how we're bringing. But there's no, it's like, no vacancies at hotels and different places. I've tried several times to even have places. And I really think that clubhouse would be a wonderful asset to fundraising as money.
So, Mr. Cagle, maybe back to home airport and call. When was the last time you raised a fee at the civic center?
At the civic center?
Like a room thing or something?
I'll turn to finance, they can look it up. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that. So, the, the big help to the hotel motel fund will come in eight years when the debt for the convention center's paid off.
Right.
That was thirty-year debt that was issued. And what we normally issue is, or what we do now is twenty-year debt. And I think it's going on its twenty-second year now.
I know it cannot pay for itself, but I was just curious. How can you?
Well, most convention centers don't. They rely on some hotel motel subsidy. It's a lot easier to pay for itself when the debt's paid off.
Okay. And how many more years do you have?
I believe there's eight after this year.
Thank you.
So, this is, we passed out to start with, and let you see some of the things that you told us back in January. We didn't hit all of them, we hit quite a lot. Once again, this is a high-level early look, kind of what to expect in July. We'll give you more detail, especially on the, all of the supplements, the requests that department heads had that are not funded in this budget. And finance department did a great job. We just finished literally last week going over the last, we go over, I go over with finance, every single budget, every single line item in the city. And we just completed that. And to put this together this quick was, was great.
Yes, sir. And I thank you, Mr. Cagle, and the finance team for doing an extraordinary job as always. But my question is, one of my biggest things that I spoke about when we got together and put our priorities, were staff. We're asking them to provide service to the residents, but we're short on staff. Code enforcement is one of my big things. When it comes to police and fire department, it's a matter of passing the test, going through training. If you make it, you make it. If you don't, so it's really not a, we need them, but it's really not on them because it's an individual tool choice that they want to sign up and work in those areas. And waste management, because our waste management staff, the individuals, the transporters who are driving the vehicles, they do an excellent job. And I know they got a pay increase. But I think sometimes that hiring more to cut down on the time they spend on the road is truly a morale booster. And also the code enforcement, I mean, I can go downtown and throughout the city and they have done an extraordinary job. Not that one department is, is more important than the other because order and so on. I'm grateful that you added to that. So, what was your decision, when it comes to making your decision on what department will get employees that you would increase their personnel? Was it the workload or retainment, to retain individuals in that department? I just?
No, it's a great question and I'm going to go back to show you. So, the only thing we talked about adding in the entire general fund was one position.
Right, what, the code enforcement?
Right, but what do you do when you run out of money? That's.
I know about the fire department, but what was your decision, I should say, to not add employees to the budget?
Because it's going to require some sort of, what do you have left in the general fund? You can't, you don't have control of sales tax, that's the second biggest revenue. The biggest revenue is property tax. And then, you got a few fees that you can talk about. So, what I'm saying is, we had this huge list of packages, sixty-seven employees. It's not that I don't agree that they're needed, it's, there's not enough money.
Right, because the concern was, and you have done an excellent job with the Steve Obar, the turnover rate was so high.
And it has come down.
A great job. And that is the reason I'm actually, I don't want us to get back in that position where we're losing, or we're taking in and looking for employees. Because we offer a lot of great benefits and you have increased pay and other incentives to retain them. But I'm just thinking, we're asking as a council for our downtown revitalization and also trying to hold, not only downtown, the residents throughout, clean as Mr. Boyd said, and former airport town, we really need them everywhere. And that department works hard, but I do think that if we could find, just me, one more person in code enforcement to help. And the council can say no. If that's, I just think that's important if we want to do the verification of our city as a whole. And maybe that's not the answer, maybe, maybe another way we can help with verification, putting more information out through social media, communication, why it's important to keep our community clean. But I really like the direction we're going and I don't want us to lose that.
I agree. But from, on that one issue, on code enforcement, I would say we need to do more work in-house on getting more efficient before we start talking about, and anything. I think we can do a lot more with the people that we have. And Mr. Rebel, Mr. Watkins are working to get that done. And I think we ought to.
It's just.
On that, just that one issue. But, but, but what you're talking about overall is kind of choose your poison. Do you not give, not give that size pay increase and add more employees and, and become a training ground again, which I don't think we're as much, just in some areas we still are, but not as much as we were, say, five years ago. It's a, that's a tough decision. More employees or paid current employees?
Well, I do want to retain the ones we have.
Yes.
Definitely that. So, that was just a recommendation, but I can see it from your perspective. Councilmember, Chicago.
And Mayor, I want to say, you know, I think she's got good points, but I think that that's where we come in as a council because your, you know, your job as city manager's job is to present the council a balanced budget. And you did that very well. And we get to see where we're short. And so, I think that as a council, you know, our job is to say, okay, here's where we need, we get the feedback from our citizens. We need more service here, we need more services there. But then, it's like, how do we pay for that? We got to figure out a way. And, you know, we get that pushback, we get that, you know, name call, we get everything. And we got to go through that and decide, you know, if this is something we want to do or not to increase whatever shortages that we want. I know that we went through, I went through that for ten years trying to get a street maintenance fee. I was cursed, I was all that, and ten years later, we finally did it thanks to this council. And things are getting better. And so, but what I wanted to say, Mr. City Manager, because you started this presentation, I think you said with our tax rate and you said it's going to go up, penny down, is that what it is?
Yes, sir.
So, if it didn't go that, that penny, how much is that penny? How much as far as revenue is that?
Well, that's about nine hundred thousand. But you also have to remember that, that values outside of new construction, what's the percent? Percent increase in the tax base minus new construction. It's going to be double-digit. And so, even with a penny decrease, tax bills are going up. Now, let me, let me say one thing. This discussion about commercial versus residential, the way our tax system is set up in the state of Texas is to undervalue commercial. And it's, it's across the state because you don't report. It's a mystery, in many cases, quite a commercial property salesman. That's intentional at the state level to make sure that commercial properties are undervalued. That's why you see this all the time. Well, that's on the tax roll for two hundred thousand and somebody buys it for seven. You might have information to know what's, what's going on. But a lot of that information is not available.
It's not disclosed.
It's not available to the appraisal district and they have vast resources to sue. And the appraisal district doesn't have the information to fight, it's an unfair fight. So, one of the things that's built in to our tax system in the state of Texas is to transfer taxes from commercial to residential. That's, and it has been debated many times at the state level.
And I know that by real well. You know, the biggest proponent of that is the Texas Realtors.
Yes, sir.
And so, we have, we've got the legislature, there's, it's called a nondisclosure state. And so, even though they know they can't disclose the price, we as Realtors cannot put the price out there of homes because it's against the law. But, you know, what, what is going to be the recommendation when we get to our tax rate? You know, is that going to stay the same as property tax rate that, or is it going to come down or?
Well, the recommendation in this proposal is a one-cent decrease and that is off the debt side. Comes off the debt side. Even with the CO issue that's proposed, we can issue that and still pay for it with one penny less on the, on the tax rate. Operations, the operation stays the same, but because values are up, you're, if, if the tax rate stays the same on your home and your value goes up ten percent, you're getting a ten percent tax increase. So, that's the.
That's where that one cent reduction comes in.
Well.
My point is, are we required to do that one percent or one cent reduction?
Okay, this is a very hard topic. You are not required, no, but it's only because of a special circumstance. Normally, the, the tax cap would come into effect, okay? So, at the state level, when they put this complicated tax cap formula into effect, there's all sorts of unintended consequences. Now, two years ago, we had an election to change the sales tax for property tax reduction to general revenue. That blew up the, the, the tax cap for three years. Because you can go back and use an unused increment. It created an unused increment of thirteen cents. So, I'm just, you know, I'm trying to walk down the middle of this. Now, also, that unused increment goes away into this year. And I think I can assure you that on this issue, the cavalry's not going to show up for us down in Austin. It's going to get worse and worse. So, we're going to be looking, we can do this budget with this one-cent decrease, but it's the last year we're going to have this luxury. We're going to be looking at probably some pretty severe cuts in the future because of the tax cap.
Well, that's what I'm hearing. I mean, if we don't have to reduce it to one cent.
Right.
You know, why do, why do you keep that nine hundred thousand because we're going to be hurting?
I hear you.
And it's, it's tough to explain. I know when I was mayor, I tried to explain it. I think the only thing that came out of my mouth is gibberish because it was so confusing and I couldn't understand how that, that worked.
Yeah. Yeah, so remember, in two thousand and nineteen, our tax rate was seventy-five cents. Under this proposal, it's, well, currently it's sixty-three, under this proposal it'd be sixty-two. Now, depending on individuals, last year, there were individuals, residential, that had no increase from the city. It's not a little increase, some could even have a reduction with that. On the commercial side, I would say probably the last two years, people probably got decreases in the city tax because this year, the appraisal went, district went out and focused a lot on commercial property. So, there are some increases on the commercial that weren't there before. Still, I would say nowhere near the actual value. And remember, the state will come in and sue the appraisal district if they don't think their value is at a hundred percent on residential. They don't look at commercial at all. But they will sue the appraisal district if they don't think they're raising the values to a hundred percent of market because the state gets significant revenue from them, not from clean school district, statewide. They have to make sure that everybody's at a hundred percent because of the districts that pay into the state. They figure that in the state budget. It's a, it's a backdoor increase.
One more thing, can I say one more thing? Because, and this is important because I know that, we talked to the county on this part, but, you know, the exemptions. And I don't know if we, we ever got any momentum on it, but with all the exemptions that are going on and being, that we're a transit area, there's a lot of people that were getting a hundred percent exemption that were renting out their properties. And it was an easy search. I had somebody do that search and they were easily able to find out. First off, all you got to do is go through there and find out where their mailing address is. And a lot of the people that had a hundred percent exemptions, their bill was sent out to somewhere out of state. And so, that's the first indicator that they don't live in it. Now, I remember the county came back and said, well, they, if you're a military, you can move to another state and maintain your exemption. And I said, well, you haven't read that far enough because that is true, what they say, except when they convert it into a rental, which probably a hundred percent of them do. And so, now you've turned it into an investment property, well, you lose that homestead exemption. And when we did the estimate of how many properties were out there at that time, it was over a million dollars in there.
Yeah, you, you do, you're supposed to lose it, but there's also, for disabled veterans, there's also business tax exemptions, correct?
No.
On property?
Yes, so you can have a business and get a DB exemption.
Yeah, but, yeah. I'm talking about like residential properties because the majority of them is a hundred percent disabled on residential property that they leave the area. So, they're not even, and they've converted them into rentals. They're collecting money. Because one of my neighbors across the street had rented for four years. And then, I looked and he's paying no tax whatsoever, but yet they're collecting rental income on somebody. And that is not right.
Well, they can have multiples. So, they, they can have their one homestead that's a hundred percent. Anywhere in the state of Texas, they can have one. But they can have multiple BB fours on commercial or residential.
No, I understand that and that's like.
They can have ten, twenty, thirty.
But the subsequent ones aren't a hundred percent.
They're not a hundred percent.
Yeah, and that's, my, my point is that when they rent it out, they lose that. And so, those properties are being rented out. And so, they're collecting tax benefits, depreciation and all that, and that's not what it's meant for.
All right. Are you ready?
Yeah.
Oh, so budget question yesterday.
Mayor Proton call.
Mr. Cagle, I'm always curious about the airport. The airport me- The airport meets their standards, the grants and incentives, because they have a grant person there. Do we have a grant person for our departments that watch those grants, so that maybe we could kinda like make it balanced or equal? Make it a lot of money?
The airport doesn't, they don't really have a person that goes out and gets grants. They have, they have a person that manages the grants they get. We have the same thing in the, in the police department. We have a person that's almost a full-time job, is managing the grants that we give.
Yes.
So, we're, we're getting all the low-hanging fruit, the stuff that we know we can get. I know I've heard this in the past, if we, if we just had a person dedicated to going out and finding grants, um, I don't know that there's a lot of bang for the buck there right now. Because it, it's not just the, the various department heads, whether it's in, in, in police, or fire, or, or the airport, that do a lot of the work to go find and get the grants. First of all, you also gotta make sure that it's a worthwhile deal, because sometimes, sometimes...
Well, any free dollars worthwhile, the way I see it, if it's free money, let's give it...
Well, it depends on the strings that come along, that sometimes those can be more than...
Than what the money's worth.
Yes, ma'am. Or they commit you to some long-term obligations that, that outweigh the grant. Now, we do have, uh, some of the engineers that are working for us on some of the road projects.
Okay.
Part of their contract is, is to go over all the federal possibilities for, that, that's the other area, there's a lot of possible money on the table.
Because it helps.
Yes, ma'am.
It definitely helps. And I'm just looking at all these figures, we need some help, so we wanna look at every grain, and anything that's under the rock that within us. Is there a specific place that I could go and help? Is it government.gov.grants?
It's all over.
It's all over the place, okay.
Did you finish, Mayor Proton?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Lawrence.
Mr. Cagle, we touched on before about the, um, you know, outsourcing and kind of looking at these options. And so, there's certain things that I'm just, out of curiosity of our sixty-seven positions that maybe we need, or is, is there an opportunity within that number for outsourcing, or it's gonna save on long-term pensions and insurance and healthcare? Healthcare, do we have anything in there? Like, I'm looking at the police chaplains, I don't know what the requirements are for a chaplain, for example. If this is a need for them, though, is this something that maybe we can come up with an alternative solution for that? Is there a committee that's gonna form local pastors?
Yeah, that's primarily volunteer anyway. It's one percent volunteer.
So, so my question is, they want a chaplain, so can we find them a chaplain by creating a committee? Are there alternatively, so in these forty-three unfunded decisions, are there any of these positions that could be outsourced instead of actual employee costs to help us offset?
I don't, I don't have the whole list in front of me, but it would be, it would be the rare case, because a lot of those, the unfunded decision packages, there's a number that are in the police department. We, uh, very little, I would say.
So, I'm just, for example, we're talking about water and techno, the water department, we employees, but if we were, because we talked about technology before, and so if we were able to streamline the technology, wouldn't that minimize our need for a maximum number of employees in that department? Do we know what those ratios are for each of these departments, so we can figure out where we can offset?
I would say, I think we, every budget that's been presented over the last several years has had a lot of that going on, u-using technology instead of, instead of adding people. So, one of the things we're doing, we're not adding a meter reader, although we're adding lots, lots of meters, is that we're gonna be eventually doing it automated. And so, we're, we're trying to do is not add a meter reader, catch all the new stuff to be automatically read and slowly expanded to the whole city. That's just one thing that comes to mind. Um, you know, we just contracted, instead of adding people in parks, we just contracted out the mowing on city facilities, so, uh, and, and we didn't have anybody in parks. And that, I'm not gonna say those two equal, because they still need more people in parks despite doing that, but, uh, I would say that's something that we look at all the time, and some people call them consultants, you know? We, we could, I suppose, add a whole lot of money here to add a, a bunch of engineers on staff that might not be that busy. So, what I'm saying is, we, we look at that...
Right, I know you would say that.
But I mean, we look at that all the time. Is it, is this a one-time thing? Is it an expertise that you're only gonna use one time, and it's better to, obviously to contract it out? Is it, is it something that's maybe really low-tech and seasonal, like mowing? Can we do more contracting and mowing out? Yeah, we're, we're looking at that as well. Is there more that we can do there rather than just the, the city facilities? I don't think there's any silver bullet there, though.
Chair, would you... Councilmember Lawrence. Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. Uh, the increase in hourly pay, I think that is critical at this junction, the work to retain, retain what we have, uh, to not go back to where we were. So, I like that conservative approach. Uh, I do think it is possible to add a code enforcement officer, to the mayor's point, that would be sufficient, in my opinion. I know when I first got on council, that's something we were pushing for, we were gonna get one. The request was two, this would make two, to help balance that out. Quality of life, looks like that's been addressed, uh, the quality of life initiatives to the parks, and on the CO bond issues, cover a lot of those, so we wouldn't be relying on a budget to find funding there. I do understand the needs for water maintenance crew. You mentioned that we kinda are behind, and we keep up with the demand, or to offset where we are, rather. And so, uh, to me, it's just something like, it's a lot different from last year's budget session. This is a lot more conservative and focusing on maintaining what we have. Uh, so, um, those are just comments I have right now.
Thank you, Councilmember Ford. Councilmember Alvarez, would you like to say anything?
Uh, no, I mean, in regards to the code enforcement, I like seeing that there's more dollars in there for abatement. I think that's, that's the positive change that we see is when an abatement happens. Personally, I agree with what you said. I think getting a better handle on the staff that we have and making sure they're as efficient as possible, making all the improvements that you can there first, before looking to add bodies, just for the sake of adding bodies, I think it makes sense, at least for this year, and I'd rather see that money go towards those abagements, because I think that's, that's where the residents are actually gonna see the change versus another officer in the field that may or may not make that visible difference, if they don't have dollars for abatement. The other thing that we talked about before was the, that environmental specialist position. Uh, you know, I know we talked, I don't know if it's in the budget or not, but there's a, there's a position there, so I don't know if it's easier to modify the existing position instead of bringing in somebody completely new.
Yeah, that position was not cut. It, it was just moved to engineering.
Right.
Okay. But we, we can talk, uh, more with, with Andrew on that. He's gonna kind of give a better explanation of what's going on.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember Solomon?
No, I'm just pretty much observing, uh, and liking what I'm hearing, though, so I guess, well, I was just concerned about, not concerned, but sixty-seven...
I'm very concerned.
About that. And that sixty-seven, I'm sure, what does that, uh, does that, would the fire department, police department, or the non, the non-police at that?
Twenty-four is definitely the, the fire department. And they, they have some other requests in that forty-three.
Fire station, right?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. And we'll, we'll get you, um, a stack that, that will have a title for every one of those packages, and explain exactly what it is, and if there's one, or two, or three multiple people requested, uh, and you'll be able to see the detail on every one of those. We just don't have it all together yet.
Right.
But of the forty-three, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head how many are policing fire, but, um, it's, uh, it'd be a fair amount.
Well, that's good. We're working on with the retention and, uh, it's good. It's good. Thank you.
Yeah, this, this is a big deal.
Yeah.
Mr. Cagle, thank you, Councilmember Solomon. The sixty-seven is not all of the positions that are abatement in the city.
No, these would be new. These would be new requests.
Depending on the package.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am, but, but when you add them all up, the twenty-four, it owns a new fire station, and the forty-three other, so there's sixty-seven requests for new?
Out of the forty-three, six were policing, nine were fire.
Okay. So, of the sixty-seven, thirty-nine are policing and fire.
So, these are proposed absolute needs as well.
I think so, yes, ma'am.
I'd agree, in public safety.
That's not, with, with public safety, safety I do understand, but we also know we have positions that are not sealed too. And that's what I'm trying to, I don't want people to misunderstand, the sixty-seven, yes, that is a need, but we still have a greater need in filling the positions we already have. That, that, I don't want that to be a misunderstanding, that, that there is a difference. We still got positions that need to be filled, but this is also a need, and it could be a future need, but right now, it was not one of the top problems.
I just thought this was more important, the abagements.
Yes, ma'am. If I want the clarity, that's all I was trying to do.
Yeah.
So, my other question, uh, Councilmember Solomon, no, no, four, no. My other question is, when's the last time you raised fees for the city center?
Um, did you put that?
Uh, Matthew believes it was prior to twenty-eighteen.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
So, Mr. Cagle, you will have your last word unless a councilmember likes to speak. Uh, what?
I just have one more thing. I hate to be the one that speaks all the time, you know? But, uh, I think, and I'm sure you guys do this, but I think, because this is a problem that even the private sector faces, you know? And, uh, one of the things that I think we need to be looking at is more technology, you know, especially like you mentioned, our utilities billing, and I'm sure that there's ways. I was out at the domain over the weekend, and up there, the fancy Macy's stores, now you can pay with kiosk. So, they don't even have people at the checkout because there's such a shortage of things. So, I think there's things available even our, within our police department, you know? We go to the mayor's conference, they have shot spotters, they have, you know, lights, you know, that are all computer savvy now. Uh, that was the big thing at the smart city was the lights and the amazing things that you can do when you own your own lights. Our problem is, we don't own it, but talking to all the other cities that own their lights, it's not just the cameras. I mean, there is so much stuff that we can put out there that will help, especially our police officers, our first responders, because, you know, you have that quick response, you know the difference between a real call and a fake call, and sometimes they have to go to all of them because they can't separate it. So, I think that, that's something that, uh, has, because I don't think it's gonna get better, but I think that's something that we have to start looking at, and the challenge, I think, from, from my perspective as to why we hesitate in the past, because there's a big upfront cost to them. But over time, it pays for itself, and I'm glad to see we're doing it with our smart meters, on our water meters, and we're doing it, but I think that's the route that we need to continue going, is finding more technology that will alleviate having us to bring so many personnel, because it's something that is not gonna slow down. I think we're never gonna be able to kill that border.
And to answer your question, Councilmember Segaro, Mr. Cagle and I have a meeting coming up next month with the Smart City Company to discuss on how we can better serve our city in a smarter way with the technology, lights, and everything, so we have it coming up next month, so...
We are doing a fair amount. If you'll remember, in, in the police department, we have a new records management system coming. We were, we're doing a ton that's semi-managing. It was a free system we got off of the county, and you get what you pay for. It was, it's horrible, but that's funded, it's purchased, it's being implemented, and then on the, our accounting side and utility billing side, we're funded to bring, to bring in new software. We're fearful that our current vendors won't even be around much longer. But we do a lot of manual stuff and finance as well. So, I, I'm just saying, I agree with you, we've got a few things in the works, but there's, there's much more that could be done.
Councilmember Alvarez?
The six percent cost of living adjustment for employees, that's in addition to their merit increases.
There's not any merit increase.
There's no merit.
Right.
It's just cost of living.
Right. So, what I would have liked to have done is, uh, we have a new, uh, employee appraisal system. We've worked very hard the past year to get everybody trained up, so we're doing meaningful performance appraisals. And what I at least wanted to do was, was ease into each department, say, the top five or ten percent in each department, get some sort of little merit bump, but it's, just all the, the money got used up, but that's something we wanna shoot for in the future, is adding some sort of merit. It's hard to, it's across the board, it's just a code, but if a certain percent can earn it, then, then, uh, I would like to do that in the future.
Absolutely. I think it, it helps motivate employees to want to do better, or they have the potential of, of merit increase on top of the cost of living. But, I mean, six percent is great. I remember when I worked here, it was two percent cost of living, and up to four percent on merit, so if you did great, you could get six percent, but then the total went away completely, and all we had was two percent merit.
So, in that regard...
Six percent's great. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Oh, I'm good.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, just real quick, I asked this the last budget discussion last year, are there any unique investments the city can make to grow our revenue outside of raising fees, tax, and all that other good stuff?
Help me out here. I, I would say the biggest, the biggest one we're working on is streetlights. Yeah, we take on expense there, but the future potential for revenue is pretty much there. So, that's one. You know, we've been working somewhat on, on the recycling side to get more, to get more out of our recyclables, and, um, so we've done some there, and that's a lot on the market. Some years, you can make a lot of money, and the next year, you might lose a lot, depending on what the market's paying for those recyclables. But that's one area that we've worked on. I don't know if there's anything, other things that, uh, that have been, we're always asking that question every year. And any low-hanging fruit, any easy stuff, long gone. There might be a little bit on the fire side, we can talk some more about. Outside of that, nothing pops into my head right quick, but I'm gonna jot that down as another, another question.
Solid, I think.
Thank you, sir. And Mayor Proton?
This is my last, but I love streetlights. You already know what I think about the investments with streetlights. I ran those people down, talking about streetlights and investments. But my question that I, that I really do, that bothers me, is that I know everyone's going into the technology age, I know smart cities, I, I see all of these investments that go into this, but what about the quality of life of a man that will lose his job because that computer? It bothers me when I go into Walmart and some places that have a kiosk. I'm sitting here beating at this kiosk when I could've had the interchange or the conversation with the person who may need to be their family. So, I don't want us to get too big on technology, and I know you're not saying just turn the city into technology, but let's allow the little man and the families to have jobs also, if we can. I know it takes a person, the lady in Walmart, she was so enthused with me, she said, "Do you know it takes a person to stand at this technology, to, to be able to help or to fix it if something happens?" So, I get that it may be a balance, but let's not get too big on taking jobs away from our families and the small person who needs it.
And we're not gonna lay nobody off, say, in, in the waterman. There's gonna be a point in time where we don't have any more meter readers, but we, we're so understaffed, and we have enough vacancies. But we, we're so understaffed and we have enough vacancies, we're going to put these people somewhere, we're not, we're not laying people off.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we don't get so tech-soddy-
Yes.
-that we forget about the little man or the person who needs to feed their family, who maybe don't go to school to learn those technologies or have that skill.
I don't think any of the stuff we're discussing now-
I know, sir.
...is enough, I wish we could have that problem to find some, something that great, we'd have to figure out what do we do with these employees? Right now, that's not a hard thing to do.
Okay. I just don't want it to be so out front that we forget the family.
Department of Labor said there's nine point five million vacant jobs.
So, we could just, yeah.
And let me-
Everywhere you go.
But we won't, we won't really get too far from the budget, that is a good point, and I think Mr. Cagle really gave a civilized answer into it, but you have a force deal of Mr. Cagle.
That was my big, I never want to forget the little man or the person who needs to feed their family, or maybe the person who invests and that helps feed their families. But I don't want to be such a techie system-
Sure.
-or a techie town, that we can't spend any time or find that common man just standing there, that you can have that conversation that makes it, we have to always consider that also.
You know, some of the most critical shortages in the U.S., police officers one of them, but another one's accountants, there are cities across the country that haven't even been able to close their books or get their comprehensive financial report finished because they don't have financial stability, they can't even hire an accountant.
It goes back to-
We're very fortunate.
-the jobs that-
That's what made me think of that, was that, and, yes, ma'am.
The jobs are there, but also, and we are growing as a city, and technology is not going to slow down, and we're running a business, and we have to be cost-effective in our decisions on how we manage our business. And I think Mr. Cagle said, yes, we're not going to lay people off, but if technology can cut down on us using gas, having to pay as much on different things that we might have to go equipment and this, on a vehicle, we can get rid of those vehicles, let technology take over in some areas, like our meters, it is cost-effective for the city, but it also have the residents, where we would not have to raise taxes to pay. And maintenance and stuff of that nature, you don't need people, but he had a good point, he will move our employees into another department, because we would never lay off people. All right, Mr. Cagle?
Not because of technology.
I said, not because, let's do that, not because of technology. Not, you're knocking on the tape.
No, I was knocking because he said, "We'll never lay off people."
Oh, wait, wait, okay, everybody's knocking, we're never laying off. With that being said, once again, Mr. Cagle, I think the council liked what you presented, some concerns I heard, employee personnel doing these positions, pay increase is great, smart cities, Mr. Sagarra, Councilwoman Sagarra has always talked about outsourcing and a source of that nature. Mayor Proton really about, please don't lay off people. Councilmember Solomon's concern was making sure that our first responders, police and fire departments have everything that they need. And with that being said, everyone have had the opportunity to speak at least two or three times, I would like for you or Fennec to close this out.
Well, I appreciate those words, but I would just say, I don't particularly like it, you know, we're trying to make the best out of a tough situation, and it involves a lot of hard decisions, so it's, with what we have, I think it's a good proposal.
Right, because Mr. Alvarez is really concerned about that engineer, environmental position, and he said you'll get back with him and talk to Mr. Cagle. So, ma'am, do you have anything for the group?
No, thank you.
Okay. This is great. All right, council, that being said, I get a moment this time?
Most to adjournments.
That was, Councilmember board and Councilwoman-